And the pledge by Ms. Heidig.
Dear Lord, we thank you for allowing us to meet this evening to do the business of Spotsavanny County. We ask you to give us the knowledge and the courage to make the proper decisions for this county and the citizens of this county. We ask your blessing for all our citizens in this county. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
By the United States of America, public which stands one nation under.
Mr. Chairman, this is our last work session that we'll have on the budget prior to the approval, which is slated for the April 14th meeting. There's two pieces that we'd like to do tonight. One of them would be, we have the CIP that we discussed Tuesday, and we're not going to get into detail, but if there's any additional comments or information or anything concerning the CIP, we'd like to address that first, and knowing that we're moving, what projects are, we'll be moving forward for approval on the 14th. Then the second piece of it is to deal with the operational budget. And we've got at your dais we've passed out, and we do have some brief items to go over to update you as well as so that we can make some decisions. In the case that we have the consensus on some items, we'll move forward. If it's not sure, staff's not sure what the consensus is, that, you know, I may ask that the board would vote on the item. We have to moving forward to the 14th. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Prior to starting the work session, I was wondering if we could, without objection, suspend the rules and allow our fire chief to give us a small demonstration of some new equipment? If no one objects?
No objection.
Shefola, for, welcome.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the board. We had prepared to do this very quickly last meeting on Tuesday night because we were talking with the CIP. This is the latest piece of fire and rescue equipment that we have, and we have been purchasing them through the CIP. It's called a Lucas II machine. It basically gives perfect CPR en route from a cardiac arrest to the hospital. And I simply wanted to point out that we've received our first two, and within 30 days of putting them into operation, we took two cardiac arrest patients and delivered them with pulses to the hospital, local hospital. So that's two, two patients in 30 days. We have a very dynamic purchasing program with this piece of equipment. It's very small, but as medical equipment is, it's very expensive, about $14,000. But we found out that we can go through the state, and we apply for a state grant, and we leverage the money that you give us, give us through the CIP. And for the price of one, we buy two. So we're able to outfit two stations for each allotment that the board currently approves to us. This was purchased off last CIP. There's money in this year, and we'll continue to our best ability possible to continue to leverage, to be good stewards of the county's money, and to continue providing life-saving services. And with me tonight is Lieutenant Waverly Alley. And unfortunately, we didn't do this Tuesday because as soon as they got ready to bring the piece of equipment in, they got another call. So thank you very much for your time, and let me just point this piece of equipment out. And again, it's not specifically to point it out to you, but publicly to point it out to our citizens. And of course, that's why I use these few minutes for that purpose, because it gives me an opportunity to tell the citizens the good things we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. At this time, is there any questions that the board would have concerning the CIP?
I don't think that we do. You need a motion for us to approve it?
No, we don't need approval. I'm just, the consensus, we're not going to vote on anything till, well, moving ahead with the CIP as presented Tuesday night for approval. But if I, and I'm hearing consensus, we'll be doing that.
On, on the CIP, though, these, the numbers that we have are sort of, the budgeted numbers, we may be able to, to let contracts that will come in at less than that. Or I noticed on those that are, are supported by bonds, we may find sort of, pay, if you will, pay-as-you-go funding that would help offset some of the costs. So we're not sort of locking in those numbers and saying, we are by God going to spend all of this, and if it says bond, we're going to do bond.
No, but many of the, correct, Mrs. Heidig, many of these projects are more than one year. So a lot of the, we will be doing a bond issuance later on in the year to get the project started. But whenever we can leverage, or for example, we have a contract, once we, we actually have a contract and it comes in at less, all the things you said is correct, we'll leverage whatever we can. But the projects are budget amounts or actual budget dollars. But we will be issuing bonds relative to what we anticipate the costs are going to be.
I ask that because, as you know, in my, in my district, no bonds were approved. I have a number of citizens that are very concerned about the utilization of bonds and saying, well, you know, because you got the ability to use that much, you're going to use that much. And I just want to make clear to our citizens that that is not necessarily the case. We will try to be as frugal as we can with taxpayer money and pay as we go where we can. But there are maybe some things that we can't do.
Thank you.
For computer, please. Tuesday's work session, you directed the county administrator to provide a scenario to balance the fiscal year 16 budget. The next few slides are the details of that scenario. Tuesday's meeting, we had noted that we had ongoing fund, ongoing funding available at $1,998,489 in one-time funding of $2,555,000. Today, we found out that we need to reserve a million of that one-time funding for potential future ED incentives. On the ongoing side, the proposal includes using $1.1 million for a 2% ongoing increase, which would be a merit increase for county employees. The $500,000 one-time funding for bonus would still remain in the budget as was recommend, recommended by the county administrator. The proposal includes level funding to the schools of $615,000. There was a conversation Tuesday night about the potential to reduce the personal property rate an additional two cents below the advertised rate. That would cost $120,000. And then there was another conversation about potentially actually reducing it three pennies. And so that third penny would be another $60,000 if that were approved. We're proposing that we increase the community development fees so that we recover 100% of the cost, which would provide additional funding of $100,000 to the general fund, and that we level fund CASA, which would cost $5,000. These items bring us to a total ongoing available of $198,489 and $1,555,000 in one-time funding. We are also proposing that we fund in Powerhouses operating requests, which would use $13,081 of the ongoing funding. They also requested that we provide $17,000 a year for the next three years for their capital campaign. This proposal would take all three of those years, $51,000 from one-time funding. This proposal would add $2,000 to fund American Red Cross and add an additional $2,000 to the John J. Wright Museum funding. FREM staff has requested pay parity for several different positions in FREMs. This funding, this proposal is to reserve $168,550, which is the estimated cost for the firefighter and medics only. This would be reserved and would be contingent upon final knowledge, skill, and ability reviews by HR to determine exactly what parity is necessary. And then finally, we would use the balance of the one-time funding to cash fund versus debt fund projects that are planned in the capital projects. That would reduce the one-time funding to zero, and it would also reduce our ongoing cost, our ongoing debt service by $94,621. And that would leave us a balance of $107,479 in ongoing funding that we're not proposing any specific use for at this point. The last item, during Tuesday night's meeting, there was a discussion about one-time funding for the EDA to restart the business grant program. The EDO fund balance has $562,000, and if the board is in agreement, we will appropriate $200,000 of that so that the EDA can restart the business grant program from that fund, leaving them $362,450 in the EDO fund. And that's one-time money. That concludes all the presentation we had tonight. We just need to hear from you all what it is that you would like us to do preparation so that we can actually draft the resolutions for Tuesday's, Tuesday, April the 14th meeting.
Questions? Trampi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When, when we convene with Mr. McLaughlin here on the 14th, I would like to have the option, as I mentioned last time, for county employees of 1% from ongoing funds and a million for one-time, which would use up most of the one-time money. I want to help the county employees as much as possible, and we can't do everything. But merely level funding the schools, that's difficult. I know we've, we've talked about parity with a 3% raise for one and doing as close to a 3% raise for the other, but there's a different kind of parity. Since the recession, we've added back only a handful of the positions that, for the schools, that were lost during the recession, whereas on the county side, we've added many firefighters. And I think most of the county departments are back where they were before the Great Recession. And level funding the schools will, will allow them to provide the 3% raise, but I feel we need to start reducing class sizes, and for that, they need new positions. So I would prefer that that 550 or half a million, whatever it is, go to the schools above level funding, basically reversing it on the county employees, 1% out of ongoing funds and a million out of, out of one-time. I'd like the board to have that option when we vote on the 14th. I think that's pretty much all I have at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ross?
On the, the EDO fund balance, is that a, and basically taking that money out to do the big grant program, is that a decision that needs to even be made with the budget?
Yes, only because the board has to appropriate that funding. So if you want that funding, the funding is there in the EDO fund balance, but they cannot spend it until you appropriate it. So.
But is there anything that would prevent us from delaying them, from starting that program? So, no?
No, no, what, what, I think, Mr. Ross, excuse me, but I think what you're saying is, we don't really need to make that decision tonight. It was a discussion of using the 200. You could make it at a later date if you wanted to do it. But what now, we have a balance of 562, and then if you wanted to utilize that money.
For the rest of the board, my preference would be to leave the EDO balance as it is, but actually have this up for discussion, because I know that the, the big program was out there before, but I'm not comfortable moving forward with that again unless I know more about it. So if we don't have to make that decision, we can just leave that money there and at a later time this year, talk about it with the EDA, see their reasoning for it and how they're going to use it, and how they're going to get information back about how successful it is, because I think that was an issue we've had before. I would propose that we, we just leave the money in the fund balance right now, the $562,450, and don't touch that $200,000 until we get a brief from the EDA about the big program, in my opinion. I have another question. On the, the $51,000 for in Powerhouse, does that basically mean we're going to up, give them three years of funding upfront, or would that be $13,081 over the next three years?
We could do it either way. We could either do 17 a year and reserve the additional years over the next three years, or we could do it all upfront. That would be up to the board.
My preference would be to do it over three years. And then I guess in the proposed thing, it looks like we have three additional pennies off the personal property tax rate? Okay, so a total of a nickel. Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Yakubowski?
Thank you. Ms. Skinner?
The, the only question I have with Dr. Trampi, and I'm sure they can, if you go and reverse it, and give, give the, give the schools the extra $5,000, then you're taking, are you taking away from one-time money? Are you? I, 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 you know, what I'm saying is, how, how does that work? I mean, I'm going to ask the board, because basically, I believe Dr. Trampi said, let's give the school $1.5 million, or $1.6, because you got 1.1 in there now. I mean, 6.5 to level fund them, and then another $500,000 you want to do so it's really one, what is, 1.15? So that's coming out of the operational cost. So our county employees then lose that actual ongoing money. So they're getting 1%. And if I understand this right, then there's the 500 that's already in the budget, the one-time. So they end up with a 1% raise with a bonus of 500,000, or of 1%.
I believe Mr. Trampi was proposing that the bonus would be increased by a million dollars. So we'd have $1.5 million in bonus funding.
And my question is, I just, I want to be able to think about that, not that when you come back, I want to figure out what, what, what is your, so I understand exactly what money's coming out one-time and what's coming out of the operation budget, please, on this one.
The, it's approximately 500,000 for each percentage. Is that correct?
550, yes, sir.
And so we were, we were going 2% out of ongoing funds and 1% out of one-time. I was going to reverse that, but if we, if we have the one-time money, rather than using it to reduce ongoing debt service, I would, I would be fine with keeping it 1% ongoing and going to 3% for a bonus, if, if we have the money to do that.
Yes, I believe that we, we, by doing that, we would eliminate the ability to use cash funding to reduce the debt service, but we would still be able to balance within, because we had an additional $194,000, so we would still be okay.
Thank you.
That's all. I just wanted to understand exactly, so what do we think about it?
My question, Mr. Barnes, the pay-for-performance suggestion and program that we're moving towards, what is the likelihood that we can get that moving by January?
I think that's as soon as you would get it, by January. I think there is a, I don't think it would at least take us six months to get the thing on, unveil it. So what I, when we brought back the recommendation on Tuesday, since there was some concern that we would get as close to parity with the schools that we, that we could, that's why we were trying to say, well, we didn't want that program to hold it up. If the teachers were going to get their increase come July 1, and our folks were not going to get it, that's why we were, and it gives us time to build it, we were suggesting that the increases would be given July 1. But if we wanted to do it pay performance based on, actually institute it, I think we could possibly have it up and running by January. No sooner than that.
My, my preference would be to hold off on any across-the-board increases for county employees and put it all in to pay for performance. So that would be an option, if we can have that for the 14th also.
I think what we would need to do, regardless of whether you implement it in January, what we're going to have to really, the board, we're going to have to have a consensus or direction, how much is one-time money, how much is ongoing, so that we can reserve that money regardless of when we implement it, so that we can put it in.
Right. And, and so I was going to say that we would do as, as Mr. Trampi had said, and reverse how you have it, and, but move that money to January.
But all of it?
All of it, yes.
So nothing July 1?
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Skinner?
Will the schools get their, their, their pay raise in June then, or at the end of June, July 1st?
I'm assuming July 1st.
I, I'm sure we'll have some discussion at the next meeting on this. I, I would just suggest that we be very careful, because, you know, the, the school is, is, it's their choice to give 3% raise out there, okay? And again, I'm going to refer back when we did 24% raise to the schools back in 2007 in that timeframe, I believe, or whatever it was, five through seven. You know, we had to give up things, we had to give up things like that. I don't, I, I would really say that giving them 3%, then giving them more money is, is, we, we got to be careful of our own employees. And I think morale's an issue. I mean, it's, it just to me says that, you know, the school has a right to do what they want to. We gave up many things in the classroom to get them up to 24% because we needed to keep people in this county. I think we need to keep people in this county, too. And one of the ways we're going to keep our experience and everything else is, is to give our county employees a raise. Now, you know, when you're telling them you're going to give them a 1% raise, and something else might be a one-time bonus, that hasn't, that, again, that does nothing to help their retirement pay. And that's why I believe we'd lose, and Rose said this last time, that's why we're losing some of these people, because of potential loss in revenue for the retirement. So I just ask you to consider that, and we can discuss it at the, at the final meeting, exactly which way we want to go. But I, I think we really have to watch the morale in this county. Schools can move their money around and they get more positions at this point, but I, I, I think we have to watch out for people who do a phenomenal job for us in this county. Thank you.
Bullock?
I, I tend to agree with, with Mr. Skinner. As most of you heard, when I spoke on this earlier, I wanted to make sure that our county employees receive parity with the schools as far as pay raises were concerned. All of the ideas that I've heard tonight, I certainly can accept them and support them to a degree. But where I can't support them is if the county is not going to give a 1%, a 2%, or a 3%, whatever, on one July, when the schools are going to get their pay, I think that we have committed another affront to our county employees. I, I support pay for performance. I support merit pay. But, but I don't support giving them a little bit here and a little bit there. I think we owe them the 3%. And if there's a way that we can do that and still keep our pay for, 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 I'm sorry, our pay-for-performance option, I would like to know that and see that on the table next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? My proposal for doing that, Mr. Skinner, Mr. Sebula, is instead of dribbling out 1% or 2%, it's to actually implement the pay-for-performance so that the employees that we have that do a phenomenal job will be getting even more than a 3% or a 1%. The position that, that I would like to move to is actually getting the pay for, for, see, it's contagious. See what you've done?
Sorry.
But actually getting that implemented. If, if we can do it in January, and it's a wait of six months, and then know, and then have our employees know that at that time, this will be a better program than simply perhaps a 1% COLA this year, maybe 2%. And doesn't matter what type of employee you are, exceptional, or as we had heard, pass fail. If you're satisfactory, or if you're above satisfactory, there should be different increases in your pay. And I would like to see if we can accelerate that and have the cash to do it, and show people that it actually does work.
Sure. And I think that's a great idea. The thing is, I want to make sure that if we wait until January, then we could make parity with an outstanding performer that might get 3% here, or 2%, or 1%. You know what I'm saying? It's, I think the employees would feel a lot better about that if we knew that come January, we will have that pay, performance pay, you know, work for performance in place. And there's an availability of funds to do that 3% for people who are good, you know, and those that are just new and, and they have 2% or something of that nature. Because I agree with you, we have some outstanding people, and there are people that do extremely great jobs and need to be rewarded for that. And I think we have a better, we have more efficiency, more efficient county when we have our employees doing that, knowing that they work hard, they're going to get recognized, and they're going to be paid for that. And so I agree with that 100%, but I, I certainly want to know the understanding that come January, that we would have this in place, and what are the ranges that we're going to expect that we can give an outstanding? Can we give it 3%? And, because unfortunately, right now, the way I look at this, too, is that they don't have pay for performance over at, at the schools. Everybody's getting their 3% raise. Okay? So I, I, I like your idea, and I do want to go to pay for performance. I think it's a wonderful idea. I really do. I just, you know, I wish we could, this is one of those areas, I told you, I wish we could combine. This is one of the areas that if, doesn't matter where you work in the county, you're a county employee, we give a raise, then we're able to work with the schools and say, you're not going to get any more than, than us. Simple as that. And that's what I, I hope we can come to. But I do agree with what you say. If we can make sure we know at next meeting how we're going to do that and what's available at that time, be happy to listen and consider it. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Bullock?
And that's, that's the reason we're here in a work session. The options and all of that, I know staff will bring, bring these back to us, and we'll be able to, to make the proper decision and the vote for the good of the employees. One thing that, as we were sitting here talking, it occurred to me that those who are retiring between that point in time get nothing. So that's another consideration I kind of throw out over the dais here to put it into the mix of things, because I know we do have employees retiring between the beginning of the fiscal year and, and one January. Just another consideration. Thank you.
Trampi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. After talking about a million here, a million there, this may seem like small potatoes, but I'm going to bring it up again. I have high hopes for the Fredericksburg Regional Alliance's new executive director. But when we're level funding almost every outside agency, I just don't feel that that agency has a track record that merits getting every penny they asked for. And I would like the board to have an option of level funding that agency and giving what would be a very small increase to the regional library. For their budget, that's a tiny, tiny percentage, but at least it's something to recognize what they're doing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just to be clear, you want to take the increase from FRA, move it over to the library?
Yes.
Okay. As an option, yes, sir?
And I agree, Paul, but I think with the new director, and I've met with the new director of FRA, quite a different person, and know what they're doing right now, of course. And, but we do have a balance available of $107,000 down there. What, could we not take it, could we not take it from, am I saying that correct, folks? When you told us, it's ongoing, we have a balance of $107,000 that we can use. Is that correct?
That was under the initial proposal, but with Mr. Trampi's proposal, we cannot use the one-time money for reducing debt service. So that number is reduced to about $12,000 with the numbers I've done so far in this proposal.
Okay, so you're saying we have no balance now at that time?
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Just, I'd like to say that, Mr. Chairman, on the Fredericksburg Regional Alliance, I too have been very impressed. And one of the things we asked them for was metrics, and they're developing those as well. I would like to at least do something more than level fund them. Look at somewhere kind of in between. Look at somewhere kind of in between, but I really believe that they are moving in the right direction and that they have focused on areas that we need them to focus on, and that economic development is one of the things that I know most of us ran on, and I would not like to see us kind of cut that short just as it's getting started.
Thank you. Mr. Ross?
I agree. I think we've seen a lot of work coming out of the Fredericksburg Regional Alliance, but I do think we should do some pay for, we've been talking pay-for-performance, so maybe we can see what they, how they perform this year, and then maybe give them even more next if they do. But I'm with, I think we are level funding so many organizations that, I'm with Dr. Trampy, we should level fund them this year. But this is something we can discuss on the 14th, correct?
Mr. Chairman, may I, I want to make sure staff that have, they're the ones who are going to make everything work. And at the end of the day, you will vote for a budget. So I want to make sure that they're comfortable and they're understanding all the different scenarios, because at some point, we're going to come in with scenarios, and we may have to, and what we were trying to avoid is, we know what those scenarios are now, we can crunch the numbers. But if we come in here on the 14th and additional stuff is thrown at us, it makes it hard, because usually what we've done is had to recess, go crunch numbers and do it. So we need to hear everything that may possibly be, and I want to make sure that staff is comfortable in what they're going to bring back. So Mary, you might want to speak to that.
Yeah, the issue is not that we can't balance it. We can crunch numbers all day. But Tuesday, in order for you to adopt a budget, we have to bring new resolutions that actually have the actual number, not an estimate, you know, whatever, down to the dollars for each fund. That's really hard for us to do without having some insight.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I think in the past, at least the last three years, we've always had to wait for you to redo them, because I'm sure that we're going to change something that's going to make you have to do a new resolution. So it might not be a waste of your time.
We're prepared to do that. I just want, but it's when, you know, we've got all these scenarios are floating, and then we get half a dozen more, that makes it more awkward, because we can do a lot of the upfront work when we get it before we get there.
But the point is, speak now or hold our peace, and I think you're hearing a lot of ideas coming out here.
I think you're...
Got it.
And we could have some consensus on those ideas, the things that you want us to, you know, a couple scenarios, we could certainly do that.
And I think you've heard some consensus and some dissensus, so...
Yeah, but I heard concessions of everything we spoke, we're moving forward with for the 14th, is what I heard. Okay.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
At the risk of anticipating losing a vote, if we do go with the scenario for the employees as presented here, leaving the one-time money for debt service, I would propose that the excess in ongoing revenue go to the schools above level. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else? I would just say that I would rather keep the general fund one-time use on hand and not reduce debt service just yet, because as we know, things pop up, and it would be nice to have money on hand. The amount that we're receiving out of it of $94,000 is almost as minimal as we are with a one-penny reduction on boats and trailers and the two pennies on the other part of personal property tax rate, which, if I'm not mistaken, the two-penny reduction that we did with the advertised rate came up to about $1.25 in tax savings. And so this would be about $2.50 for the average person of tax relief. I'm all for reducing taxes, but substantial tax reduction where it actually makes an effect is more important, in my opinion. We had taken a look, and I had asked staff to take a look at the furniture and fixtures tax that we have to reduce the burden on startup businesses and, well, all businesses in that, in that case. And it turns out that we don't have the statutory authority to raise the threshold. I think it's $15 right now we can eliminate. So we have to go to the General Assembly for that. That, in my opinion, is a better way to focus tax relief and tax reduction to help our business, businesses grow and startup businesses to consider being here. Reducing two pennies on the personal property rate is, as I said, another $1.25 that even if everybody spent that in the county, we would not be recouping that tax benefit back to the county at all. So another scenario would be to take that $180,000 and see where that could be used, or to put it back into the general fund balance, because, simply because we have money doesn't mean that we need to spend it. And Mr. Ross, I would absolutely agree with you on the EDO fund. That's something we don't have to do right now, and we need to make sure that the big grant, when it's up and running, is what we expect it to be. And so I would ask that we put that off until they come to us with a plan of how they can rework it and make it work better. So we can take that off the table and talk about that at a later date. So there's another scenario for you. Any other questions or comments?
Let me get staff's attention. Tammy, look, guys, for now's the time to ask.
I don't know how we do all what, all have it figured out.
Thing, it would be nice if we had a couple scenarios that had consensus. There are so many pieces now, I don't know how to even start.
Mr. Chair, one of the things is, we don't have Mr. McLaughlin here tonight.
Right.
And I'm sorry, this board has never made a decision like that with a person missing as important. And I know it's a problem, but you know what? If we need to stay longer on the 14th, then that's what we have to do. But I want, and Mr. McLaughlin's not here, and we shouldn't make those type of decisions without him here.
I think what we would do, with permission from the board, Mr. Chairman, is that we would come in, deliver what scenarios that we understand the best we understand them. Then after that, we're going to ask for the consensus or a vote, which one scenarios we're moving forward with. We would probably adjourn, I would bring them back later in the meeting like we have done before, but in fairness to them, they're going to need some time to really do this. But what's going to happen when we first come out is we're going to have to seriously almost vote, you know, and it's pick or choose, but we're going to have to vote it, so that we have a real good understanding, so that they can, you know, crunch the numbers. And then hopefully, we don't have too many more scenarios that we have to do. And I'll talk to them a little bit, but it just, I do appreciate it, I do understand it, but it's awkward for them to do. We were talking about it earlier, did you not, what to expect? And I said, well, we have one member not here, so we can expect, I don't think you have any final decision, but some general idea of what direction. But I think at this point, we have a general idea. There's several directions. We just have to figure out how we can bring them back to you. But we'll do our best to do that.
Would it be helpful to take a look at the smaller parts of this and see if there's a consensus to remove those?
Well, I think, I think the big pieces right here for us, we did talk about, one is the schools. That's a big piece of this. The second is what we do with employees. And under both cases, we've got three different scenarios, I think. I don't know any way to get around that, that's what I heard. So those are the bigger pieces. I think once we get those out of the way on the 14th, then we can kind of drill down to some of the other stuff. But I think those are the two biggest ones, at least that's what I say, in terms of money available and money you put out. And then we can hit the, once we get that through, get the low hanging ones, they'll be real easy, because we'll know we're going to commit that money to those two areas, regardless what the amounts are. I bless you.
So I would assume, then, that there's not any more scenarios that anybody has? I think that we have probably, yeah.
Okay. We will go to work, and we will see you on the 14th, and we will bring back the scenarios, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other business before the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I've been asked by a member of my board here to try to fill some of the gaps I have in my committees. And if it's without objection, I would like to appoint Mr. Todd Rump, this time to the Board of Building Code Appeals and Minority Affairs. And without objection with that. And if it's possible, he's asked me also if the board won't object. He does want to be on the tag, the Transportation Advisory Group, and he says he does have the time to fulfill all those functions. So without objection, I would nominate him for that, those committees, those three committees.
I think you'd be hard-pressed to find us turning down citizens that are volunteering for that many committees especially. So do you need a vote by the board?
Yes, we do. So it's my, my motion is to appoint him to those three committees, and I will say it one more time, a motion to appoint Mr. Todd Rump to the Board of Building Code Appeals, Minority Affairs, and Transportation Advisory Group.
Motion, discussion. Seeing none, please vote.
And I certainly want to say thank you to Mr. Trump for volunteering for that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Six yes.
Thank you very much. No, he was here last night, he gave me all the paperwork, and I looked it over and everything.
Very good.
Thank you.
Anything else? A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Fair. Next meeting is April 14th, 3:00 p.m.
Well, we can only go until midnight without a waiver of the fund.